All right, welcome everybody to the, sorry, my husband just walked in. Uh, sorry again. Welcome, everybody. Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission, this is one of our work sessions today is Thursday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is five oh two P M. And we are meeting virtually. What? Oh, six oh. Six oh two P M. Sorry. Uh, hey, Kristen, um, let's start with a roll call planning commissioners. This is Amanda Podmore Chair.
Marcia Hayden.
Well, yeah, Collins.
Brian.
Gary cause.
Thanks. And then town council.
Luanne, excuse me, Luanne Hook.
Welcome. And then town officials.
Erin Nelson serving as town manager.
Kristen Burchnell permit tech representing the building department.
Thanks, everybody, and welcome everybody else. Um, okay, we have um, a couple of things to get through tonight, but we'll start with number one, a building department update. Um, and I'd liken that after we get an update from Kristen for us to talk to about um, the, the issue of a land use clearance and whether or not that should be part of our process. So, um, Kristen and Erin, I'll turn it over to you if that makes sense.
Hey, we've uh, we've maybe have some hefty discussions tonight, so just brace, brace for impact. Um, there's a few things I wanted to talk about. First of all, um, we got on the same page today about these meetings. And so it sounds like the first meeting of the month, we will have a building department update. And I will submit those um, to the planning and zoning at Town of Bluff, the Friday before. Um, so we'll, we'll have things a little more readily available prior to right now. Um, so the first thing I want to talk about is process to obtain. Oh, I'm not sharing my screen with you. I thought it was the whole time. Sorry. Hold on, let me grab your hair. Um, so the first thing I want to talk about is the process for obtaining a building permit. Um, as we have it set up right now, um, and we will discuss this, so let me give you an overview. All applicants have to first obtain a land use clearance, including residential. Like, everything goes through land use clearance uh, prior to applying. And the reason why is with the planning commission only meeting every other week. Um, we in the building department have a fourteen day window from point of application to either approving or denying that. And so getting the land use clearance ahead of time doesn't eat into our fourteen day window. Um. So there is an option. Um, Marcia and Amanda and Aaron and I discussed this previously, there is an option to assign someone from the planning commission, the authority to sign off on simple land use applications. And we would be coordinating with them directly um, as a building department. Um, and so it, it makes sense to be chair or vice chair, but it could be anybody um, assigned at your discretion where we would, we get a application in and we immediately um, would forward it to them for land views clearance signature. And then we would review it for the building code compliance. Um, I would like to go this route just to simplify the land use clearance, but as it stands now, the land use clearance is still in place. So I'm going to stop sharing so I can see all of y'all and ask what you would like to do with this. Do we stay the course and keep doing exactly what we're doing? Where people come to planning commission for land use clearance first with that extra application and that extra fee? Um, or do you want to make this more inclusive in the building application process? Anything that's in a gray area would still be kicked to planning commission.
So I'll um, I'll jump in if that's okay, because I, the mayor came and talked to me about this today. Um, and I just as a reminder, I reminded her and a reminder today that we're in a work session, so we can't um, we can't make any formal like votes or recommendations, but um, this discussion can be taken back to the town council. Um, so just putting those parameters on our discussion for today, but um, you know, we talked about what some of the issues that have come up in the past were, well, we're the planning and zoning commission is a recommending body and we work as a unit. We can't make decisions unilaterally. Um, Anne said, the mayor said that we are, this could be an administrative task that is assigned to one particular person on the planning and zoning commission, so that is an option. Um, it wouldn't change the liability for that person according to what the mayor said. So. So that might be an option for us. Another thing we talked about was how um, it like the, the value of having somebody, the monetary value of having somebody go through the land use clearance process and through the built, building permit process and how it's municipalities for residential buildings, you don't have a land use clearance or that's kind of wrapped into the building process. So um, since like, I think Kristen and Erin and folks, since you have talked to Anne, one of the ideas I had today was that um, I'm wondering if we can kind of go a middle ground where for residential building permits, I'm wondering if there can be no land use clearance, but instead the building department is reviewing a building permit, they're checking for setbacks for heights, everything you would look at in a land use clearance process. But then we would still potentially keep land use clearances for commercial or industrial projects. And then those are coming before either a planning and zoning commissioner, like the commission or a P Z administrator of sorts. So I've been thinking about this sort of middle ground and want to see if people thought about that option.
That's a pretty clear cut line, right? Like this is residential use or this is commercial use. Um, I think your only uh, gray areas there would be like overnight rentals, which we've addressed in other ways in bluff, so.
Yeah, any other, any commissioners want to weigh in?
Um, I would like to comment that this may well be the best compromise or, or, or uh, answer to solution to this is to separate commercial from residential. However, I am still concerned that someone has to pay two hundred dollars for an L U C and then the development costs even in commercial. If you are starting a business, you are starting it on a hope and a prayer. Um, and so two hundred dollars makes a difference. So if in fact, we are to divide this off in some sense, um, I'm still concerned about the cost. Maybe it's no cost, maybe it's a cost that then gets um, absorbed into the building process. I don't know. Um, you know, if you said, hey, commercial people, you have to pay two hundred dollars for us to do this. But if in fact, we approve it, that two hundred dollar rolls into part of whatever cost. Um, so I would like to look at that. Other than that, I think that um, that may be the answer. And it may be the answer as we grow. In other words, let's do this for a while and see if it brings us the answers we need that we stop seeing the regular everyday stuff, but we're still seeing the stuff that we need to.
Thanks, Marcia. Uh, Erin, you want to go?
One of the questions I had, so Kristen, it's been a little bit since I've compared the L U C to our new building permit application. But is there, I, I just feel like most of it's duplicate duplicated in one application versus another. So I really do hear where Marcia is coming from, where it's an undue burden on the applicant. And we're not really collecting all of that much additional information from an L U C that you wouldn't already be seeing on the building permit. So I was just wondering, Kristen, if you and I can help identify what those areas might be, if any, um, that either, you know, we just add to the building permit and, and just try to get rid of the L U C application or scale it down. Because yeah, I just, I agree across the board. I know in the council discussion, and I apologize for not being on our, on your last meeting, the council discussion was that, you know, there are still fee, there are still costs associated with planning and zoning, you all get a very small stipend, but there's that stipend. And then, you know, we've got other, other things. But you know, in the grand scheme of things, if we can't run a town by reducing a two hundred dollar L U C application, that doesn't make much sense, so.
I think one of the short answers here is to separate it residential, commercial, because we wouldn't have to update ordinances and things like that. We just say residential is exempt. And we leave it at that for now. And we see how it goes down the road. Um, you know, originally when we had this conversation, we, we talked about potentially bringing on like a planning administrator sort that would be the signature slash liability on these. But that's just not in reach right now. And so um, we need to find a, a temporary semi-permanent solution for this.
So the justification really is, we're really looking at land use when we're looking at commercial. Is it, does it fit into the right zone? What is the zone? Is the use correct? And then everything past that is very much like building department. Yeah, you're meeting all of the, the code stuff.
And I, I want to say real quick, sorry, Marcia, the reason for this is that you have your checks and balances that planning, planning commission is driving use. That's your side of the fence. Building codes is our side of the fence. And we, and it's not that we don't talk across the fence. But it's that extra, that extra check and the extra milestone to say, you know what? Yes, at least two people have signed off on this development as being okay.
Well, if I may, I, I didn't mean to go again out of turn here, but it brings me back to the one that um, you and Amanda started with, which is, does one planning and zoning person become the go-to? And I would express a little concern with that because as the person who has been answering the emails in the past for now four plus years of, I find myself not able to answer all of them. I certainly can answer, hey, do I need a building permit for a fence? And I go, no, you do not. But the minute they say, can my fence be purple? I need to call all of us, you know, I need to put it on the agenda or whatever. So my concern is that in signing off to one person, many of the procedures would be easy. And yes, you can build your fence, don't call me, have a nice day. But others would just bring us right back into procedure of, we all need to see it. So I'm a little concerned with that and I'll stop there.
I, I definitely share that concern, Marcia, and which is, but I, I am really leaning more and more towards residential, no land use clearance, but right now business L U Cs, commercial L U Cs still come before us. And we, we only get one or two commercial L U Cs a year anyway. Um. And I think that's helped, that helps keep two eyes on issues where um, like adherence to the code is a little bit more um, nuanced and detailed, so. Yeah, I'd love to hear from other planning and zoning commissioners if folks have thoughts.
Sure, I'll go. Great. Um, hi, everybody. Thanks for all of your presentations. This is some really good information. I like the, the conversation. And I agree with Amanda's going with, we don't, we don't take care of the residential and stick with commercial. Um, I also express or feel some concern about um, a planning official, because I worry it would become me, because I'm already in the office and it would kind of make sense. And I don't feel confident signing off on things without your guys' input and I, and discussion.
Thanks, thanks, Leah. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just kind of pick that the um, you know, if we are splitting that down between residential and commercial too, that the commercial, it seems like those would be decisions we would want to bring for the whole council anyway, because they are larger. So it sort of seems like it's an issue that would resolve itself just by that solution, so.
Yeah.
Um, Gary, you'd like to add anything?
No, excuse me. No, I uh, I agree with what all of you said and what Brian just said, that it, you know, commercial would be a bigger deal.
Thank you, Gary. Um, Leah?
Yeah, I had another thought. I think that it could be nice to have commercial stay with planning and zoning, because this is a public meeting. And I think that the public is probably going to want to have the chance to hear about the, the development and hear about the, the procedures and our, our thoughts on it. Whereas residential is a lot more straightforward typically.
Kristen, go ahead.
Um, I was just thinking if we want to go this way, because it sounds like, I think this is an administrative internal action we can take immediately. Um, because we don't have to update any ordinance, so we can implement it like right now.
Okay. That sounds great. Yeah, it seems like we're all in consensus here and um, uh, Kristen or Erin, do you want to report this back to the mayor or? Or me too?
I'll report it back to the mayor and then um, you know, I also, I just want to be really cognizant that you did get an L U C request the last time. So I will look at that particular case as well to determine, um, you know, they paid their fees and everything, but I just want to make sure it's fair for everyone. So I will um, identify that one and kind of work on that um, behind the scenes from a billing perspective.
Well, thank you. Of course. Alrighty, so Kristen, back to you if you have other building department things you want to talk through.
We do, so um, this brings me to, if you have community questions, please send them to us directly. Uh, I've been getting a lot of secondhand knowledge or thirdhand knowledge about, well, what about this or that? And we just need very, I need to talk to whoever's actually doing the work. Um. And so um, we usually need questions if they're, if they're looking for clarification in writing, um, like in an email, so that we can have documentation of, they said they were doing this and we told them they did not need a building permit. So it's a, it's a legal cover our butt sort of thing. Um, I would hate to have a third party come to me and be like, oh, okay, well, you said that they don't need it. And then they went back and reported, well, they, they said you don't need it. So just please have everybody come to us directly. Um, I'll get them, if it's something I don't know, I'll get them in touch with Corey right away so that we can keep it very clean and clear.
And all, all those emails go to building@townofbluff. Correct. And that goes, okay.
Yep, here, I'll put that right there.
Yeah, and could you just zoom a little bit for uh, us on small screens?
Really? How's that?
Much better on my phone. I was, I was just imagining all the words.
Okay. Um, the application package documents are online. We are, I'll email them out to directly, so if you do have people ask, um, you can save them off on your own computer if you want. Um, we're also working on uh, kind of storyboarding the website. The summer interns are going to overhaul all of the website. And so we didn't want to dive in, deep dive that process, just to have it be changed in literally two weeks, hopefully. Um, and so just know that we've, we've got the bare minimum up there, but we are working to develop that by the end of the summer with the interns. Um, I'd like to share this tracking sheet for projects. Um, and this is, we get more information than this in the application, but as far as common public knowledge, um, this is a level I feel comfortable with publishing. Um, if anybody, any billing application is open to a grammar request if anybody wants to see the full thing. Um, but this, this is what will be published to you once a month, so that you can see what's going on. And all of this below the dark line is from the county. We don't have records forever. So we only have till two thousand nineteen. They're probably in a cardboard box somewhere in the basement, but I didn't feel like it was worthwhile to track those down yet. Um, does this format as part of our monthly update, any comments on a different format or? Anything?
I like it. I like it. I think that we have something telling us, mostly what we want to do is just be able to know quickly if something is permitted. And then if we had to do a deep dive into one of them, we would be contacting you for the information. But by having this, we can say, oh, he did get the permit for it, move on. And especially if the planning and zoning commission is not going to see some of that everyday ones, we're going to walk by something under construction and go, hey, does that have a permit? And we will be able to look at our list and go, yep, all set, because we won't know.
Yeah, and this, I, as soon as I get an application, I update this. If you would like, I'm happy to give you the live link to this. It's, this is in our um, OneDrive. I know you guys are in Google. Um, hopefully, I, I don't even know if I should share this. We're hoping to move you to OneDrive.
Going to force you into OneDrive, sorry guys. Coming quickly, but I will walk you through it. I'll handhold.
Nice. So this is in OneDrive and a live document, so um, I think it would be helpful instead of waiting for the once a month that you could, hey, I was on a walk today and saw this and you can go home and check and it'll be up, okay, they got an application. Um.
Yeah, so give us editing capabilities, but.
Yeah, no, no, don't touch my stuff.
This is fantastic. You're lovely.
A little, a little bit of what the status is in review means we've received their application, but we haven't um, assessed fees yet. Open means that it is open and under construction, they're good to go. Closed is they have a certificate of occupancy. And then those expired are, they've abandoned that project more than a hundred and eighty days and denied is obviously it, it isn't going to work. That denied could be because of a um, land use issue. So just when you're looking at these, that's what those mean. Um. This brings me to our next one as you're out for a walk. Um. We're having, we're struggling with this one, so let me zoom in here. So we originally were um, thinking about allowing some sort of an exemption period. Building permits and as we talk about this with legal and with the mayor and with Erin and like, you know, the process for obtaining a building permit has always been there. Um, even at the in-between time, it, it was, you will apply with the county up until Bluff adopted it April first, right? Um, and so I, there's a lot of projects going right now that do not have a building permit. They never contacted the county, like, there's no emails or phone calls or anything that they even tried. And we feel like if we open ourselves up too much to help people, that is going to bite us in the butt. And so what we would like to do is send people letters saying, hey, we know your project is currently underway, but you are required to have a building permit. And please reach out to us within ten business days. We are not going to, this is our compromise here. We're not going to charge people two times the building permit fee as that penalty. We'll just pretend like they just started and, and move on from there. At some point, um, you know, this is going to get phased out where people know that they need a building permit. Um, it's been very well known in the community since we adopted this the last few weeks. I've heard a lot of chatter about it. Um, and so people know they need a building permit at this point in time and that grace of, hey, we're not going to penalize you. Yeah, is timely. So would like to get these out probably within the next week. Um, a lot of this language was taken from other legal documents um, that I've worked with. And so we need it reviewed by the, by the Bluff um, attorney, but otherwise. Here it is. So we're trying to make it hopeful and I could use some work with the language.
Uh, Marcia, go ahead.
Could you, first of all, could you go ahead and um, go further down? Because we've read the first paragraph, but I didn't see the rest. And then
Sorry.
No, go ahead. Oh, I see, okay. Okay, so here's my concern. Um, I'm sorry, but here I go being the curmudgeon again. Why are we not, what is this failure to get a permit might mean you cease and desist? So here's my thing. It is well known in the planning and zoning world that if you start building something and we catch you and you finally go, oh, okay, here are the papers. And when you do that, you go, well, this doesn't work where you've got it. You must now take out everything you've done in the past week that we caught you doing. In other words, what is this timeline of, don't worry, submit the paperwork or, but we won't cease and desist you unless we, it's like, no. This paperwork must say, who are you? What are you doing? Stop immediately and file paperwork. Um, I'm a little, I'm being mean, but I'm being mean about the idea that just what you just said, it is well known, and by the way, has been true forever, that you need permits to do things on your land or ask if you do. We have a couple of people in town ask us all the time, do I have to do this? Do I have to do this? And it's great, half the time they do not, but at least they asked. So I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional here that we're saying, don't worry, submit some paperwork, we'll let you know.
Anything, oh, the, the kind of deal breaker for me to, to be mean, to be mean is um, these processes have always been in place. And a lot of people on the list right now, they never emailed me at the county or called me or, so it's not, oh, well, we didn't know because Bluff didn't have a building department set up. It's well, it has always been there. So would you, Marcia, would you like to get rid of the ten business days immediately?
Uh, I would like to find something that says, stop work and submit your paperwork. And it's to their advantage to do that, because if they submit something we don't like, we're going to make them take it out and we're going to cost them money. And one of the discussions in state law and all laws is, you cannot use, I spent my money already as an excuse for not complying. You cannot do that. And so stop them, stop them from spending their money before getting those papers. That's, that's just my picture in this. We've seen stuff all around us that we know people know are supposed to apply.
You always say your investment does not make you vested.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd like to share some thoughts too, and I'd welcome other commissioners. Um, I think this is a great idea to do this. Um, my approach would be slightly different than Marcia's, not saying that's good or bad. Um, this is based on talking to Moab, to their planning and building department and just talking about how they really like to work with like, the carrot, then the stick approach and how we're, we're having a building department, we want to um, we want to get people to comply. We don't want to be seen as a punitive body, but rather a body that works with you to help you get that vested right in your property. And so I was thinking, A, that it should be more than the ten days. I think, I think, I was thinking it should be more like thirty days to get a building permit in case they need to get things from engineers or, you know, if everybody's going to Jones and the Mill for a drawing, like Jones and the Mill might be like, ah, I can't turn them around. So I was thinking of giving people more time, that might be out of line. And then I was also wondering if there's um, other things, like if we wanted to list other potential repercussions that are like serve kind of as an encouragement, like failure to do so will result or could result in a cease and desist and or failure to get a or like withholding a certificate of occupancy. I wonder if there's anything else we want to list there that are like reasons to do this.
But we say something to the effect of like, this is an immediate cease and desist until you apply, because then we don't put any.
Yes, 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 yes.
Until you apply. So if it takes you 60 days to get your engineering, that's fine. But this is, you may not continue on the project at this time until you have it in place because Marsha's right, and even 10 days, you can get a lot done that might have to be torn out.
That's true.
Oh, I do like that. If you say cease and desist and now give him, because I agree with Amanda, 10 days isn't always time for paperwork. So it would be cease and desist and start the process quickly, as quickly as you'd like to and can.
I like that. That was where my mind was going as well with hearing our opposite ends of the spectrum. I love our conversations. This is great. It's always right there in the middle. That's, that's the right answer. Brian and Gary, any thoughts you want to share?
No, it sounds like a good plan to me. I'm with Malia. I like, it's always good to have, we always, that's why you have a group discuss things so you can find your way to the middle.
I like that. No, I agree.
So will any of these, Kristin, need a like a retroactive land use clearance? Is that like if they're commercial? I don't know if there's any commercial ones.
Um, I think we're, I think most of it's let me get the list together and if any need a land use clearance, we will we'll kick it to you. We, we've got to be careful with the language of saying retroactive because it's not retroactive, it's right now. So there is a separate, there was a separate letter we were going to send out. And that is the retroactive letter. It basically, let's see. All right, so we'll get to that retroactive in just a second here. So how does this? Figure it out a little bit better, but basically it's an immediate stop work order and we will help you find a way forward.
Take off the, the first paragraph, take off the last sentence, failure to do so will result in a cease and desist order. Because now you're saying cease and desist.
It'll look something like that.
Oh, nice.
Okay.
Short and sweet.
It's the information from that first paragraph though.
Okay, I'll work, I'll work on it. That we don't have to do on the fly. So the secondary letter is for things that are done. And if, if everything is enclosed in that, we, we can't inspect anything without them like paring stuff out. Now, this can get very legally expensive very fast if we want to pursue it. And so to cover the Town of Bluff, we're basically saying we're, you know, we're going to let you have it. You didn't get a permit for it. And that's on your own liability because it hasn't been inspected. Because again, that the process has always been there. And they still didn't do it.
Yeah, go ahead a second.
Are these products still going to require a certificate of occupancy? Because I feel like that's addressed in here.
See, and that's, we can't give them a certificate of occupancy. Unless they tear a wall off and we can look at their electrical and plumbing. So that's where you're like, hey. Been a lot of money on this and we, and if they try to resell it or whatever, and this is commercial, but also it does apply to residential, you know, if they try to sell it and the mortgage company wants certificate of occupancy, we don't just hand those out. So we're trying to protect people from shooting themselves in the foot later.
What is this, uh, extending free plan reviews to you?
We, sorry, we got rid of that.
Okay, I was like, I don't.
We decided, no, no, no.
Okay.
And I need to, I'll need to rework the language on this one too, based on how we did the, the violation letter. And we need something else here at the bottom that's like.
Well, here's, while you're typing, a question would be this kind of letter would be to rewritten per individual incident. Because this one is addressing this uninspected handicap bathroom. The next one might be something else. Is that what we're saying? This, you're showing us the example of an enforcement letter. Is that correct?
No, this is not an enforcement letter. This is a, we are releasing our liability on your project.
Uh huh, okay. Okay, that's different. So.
We're saying you can have it, you already did it. But we're not, we did not approve this in any way.
Okay, okay.
No, this, this doesn't cover, if there is an immediate life safety issue, let's say somebody did an electrical panel without a permit. That's more of a life safety issue versus you made your bathroom bigger. And so this situation is more on a case by case basis of if they did an electrical meter the wrong way, we're going to make, we will make them tear it out.
So Kristin, this brings up a little bit of the issue of process as to from now on, the building department's going to be issuing some of these letters and some of these things. And P and Z doesn't need to know about it except in our building department report where you go, okay, I issued two stop letters and I issued a, you know, an enforcement letter or whatever. But we're not taking that on unless it becomes an appeal and a process or something. Okay.
Correct. And I, I won't give you all the letters. I'll just say there was a release of liability letter sent to these people.
Great.
But that, that one is going, that's a one-time thing, right? That's, we have a bunch of people who just finished projects. We're going to give it to them and from here on out, it will be a cease and desist. So, so this letter is a one-time deal. Flap on the hand versus as of April 4th or April 1st, you know, this was in place, there was absolutely no reason for you not to. And so that will get a cease and desist.
Well done. Thank you.
So I'll rework these a little bit.
Great.
Or a lot of it. Sorry, I can't, I, I can't tag team and see you guys and do this at the same time. Just for the record, there's a, this isn't necessarily public information, so there is a time record sheet for me. Just know if you want it, you can grammar request it. But I, I didn't want to necessarily publish this. It might be best, I'd be happy to share the live document with you instead of including it in the planning commission. And that is all I have.
Amanda, if I may, I'd like to follow up with Kristin exactly where we are on this, which means I love that you're running a time sheet and no, it's really not our business. It's between you and the, the town management because that's your contract. So I don't feel bad about that, but it does bring up the question that I have written on my agenda for today, which is the process by which we reach out to you. So if I get, if I answer a planning and zoning email, you know, how high can I build my fence? And I double check my, my ordinance because I know how to check how high the fence is, but it's not in there because it says how far underground can my fence go and it's not there. Do I reach out and call you? Do I put it on the P and Z agenda to ask permission to call you? Do I call Erin? Give us a sense of what you need from us.
So anything regarding building, please send to thebuilding@townofbluff.org. Or text, it's just everything has to be documented. So yeah, I can do phone calls on the fly. But just keep in mind that that doesn't protect us very well. And so the best is to email anything to me so that we have comment, I can forward those on to Corey and then he can give me, you know, his building official stamp of this is a yes or a no.
Awesome. That makes perfect sense. So when I'm answering the planning and zoning email, planning@townofbluff.org or whatever, and I see the question that I can't answer, I say, thank you so much for asking. I am forwarding this along to Kristin who you and you will hear from her. And then I take my hands off of it. Do we feel good about that? Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I, I check the email at least every other day, if not every day. And so, and we're not, we just don't see that much, right? So I usually check it and it's empty, but yeah, please forward everything via email. And we'll look into it and then they have a written response back.
Perfect. Thank you for the process.
And then, yeah, in the spirit of us working through new processes, I think let's just maybe redundantly CC the building department on things. And I think we can probably expect to start getting less and less emails into our emails and the planning and zoning as questions are going directly to the building department. I had a follow-up question too. We were, we were talking about doing like a new, you know, public handout flow chart of like, if you need a building permit, here's the process. Is that part of the website in turn workflow work or? Okay.
Yeah, we were going to put together some like infographic stuff. Hopefully the process is simpler and I want to make it even simpler and keep getting, keep shaving off things. So that is simple, is easy for the public to understand and they know where they're at. There's really only two steps with us. They apply. We assess the fees, they pay the fee and they're good to go.
Anybody else have questions for Kristin or Erin?
I just want to say thank you to Erin for that lovely email that explained to my naive self.
No, 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 you're, you're good.
That process, that was a really help, that was actually a very helpful email that really answered a question that had been asked to me and that also I had. So thank you very much for putting it together.
It's a very good question and it's good for me to sit down on these meetings. Again, I apologize for not attending earlier in the month. But I had been getting that question a lot too. So I was like, I'll just type it up and have it. And I definitely want all of you to feel comfortable, shoot me emails, send me stuff. Clearly, you know, the things that should go to public meetings should. But now that we are like building out all these administrative functions, utilize them to their full extent, including myself. So thank you. And no, I was like, oh, I'm taking the notes. Let me just get in there and add some clarity. So thank you all.
Yeah, you do a very good job explaining it to the layman like me.
Awesome. All right. Well, I think we're ready to move on to item two. Does that sound good to everybody?
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap out and let you guys do your thing.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kristen.
So I think we, I might want to move us quickly through a couple of items on the agenda. So I, item two, RV ordinance, we still have no update from the town attorney. So I'd like to skip that for now. Item three, discussion on enforcement mechanisms. I think we're also waiting for more in, in, in input from the attorney. So I'd like to not discuss that in depth tonight unless somebody has some, oh, Marsha, go ahead.
Just one quick comment is to say, we don't necessarily care about enforcement in all ordinances. We just want to know the enforcement on the ones we care about, P and Z ordinances. So they're really, we, we just did a bunch of them together just now.
Yeah. Yeah, agreed. Any other comments on item three? Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Malia and then Lillian.
Okay. If this, if this is the, if this applies right now, at the town council meeting, Mayor Leppenin asked that we take over the Excel spreadsheet on enforcement. And I guess the next question is, what does that mean? And how do we move forward, if that's, if that falls within this line item?
Oh, okay. So she wants us to take over the spreadsheet and we haven't had legal input. Okay, so I think I know we're running a little bit later on time today. I think what we should do is so we were all assigned to, to ordinances to review. I think we should all put our notes in that column in the spreadsheet. So maybe we should recirculate the spreadsheet. And then I think we should look at all of those, all of our notes in one go and maybe make a recommendation. Wow, see, I I'm just hesitant for us to, to like, you know, look at them as a whole and make a recommendation when we really need the lawyer to help us look at it too. So sorry, I'm thinking on the fly. I'm not very good at thinking on the fly. Why don't, can I get back to folks on this or do folks have a recommendation?
If, if I may, I think what has to happen is Anne had taken that list from us and we had sent along anything we had written in our comments. And supposedly she was going to look that over and say what she thought perhaps the town might do. But it appears that they're overwhelmed, so they're giving it back to us. And the answer we came up with was, we can't really do anything about this until we know the legal input of what to do. So this may be a, yes, we're happy to work on it with you, but not without Chris coming to the meeting, our attorney, or something like that because we can't answer it. We can look up the research of, hey, it says, charge them double or something, whatever, you know, whatever you came up with. But we don't know if that's legal if we don't check it out. So my suggestion would be, let's take this item and put it on the list of attorney work session in some form, whatever that is.
And maybe first we can still put all of our notes in that one document. And kind of make sure they're aligned and stuff. So I still think we could potentially still work on this in a work session. But yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Malia, go ahead.
I think that's a great idea for us to put all of our comments into the spreadsheet and also I think that the, one of the big reasons that we decided to do this was so that we would be able to have a general enforcement for everything. This, this is the way that this is, everything is going to be enforced. This is the same operating procedure, the same, the same method. And so if we're even, I like the research that you did, Amanda, with figuring out what Moab does, writing that down somewhere and it might be better if we have something to present to Chris, but more so than just asking what do we do from here? So maybe it is actually for this ordinance, it would make sense that we have this, this three-step and but with this other one, it's a little bit different. So you know, enforcement for this ordinance is this way, enforcement for that type of ordinance. Ordinance is this way, enforcement for that type of ordinance is that way.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't really have examples. I'm just. Maybe so we could present to him for our next meeting.
Um, does everybody have access to that enforcement? Spreadsheet and does everybody have the ability to drop their notes in there or do, does any, do any folks need help with that?
Is it in our Google Docs?
I think Malia, Malia just sent it around. I just got it in my inbox.
It's not a Google Doc. It's, I think it's a OneDrive.
We're switching over, folks.
So are we able to contribute to it if we don't have OneDrive or I'm not sure what?
We are, right? Yeah, we can, we can contribute to it.
Yeah. I put the, anyone with the link can edit.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll look at it. If I get stuck, I'll call you, Malia, or just get some help, but.
That's great. You know where to find me all the time.
No, that's fine. I, I think I put my comments in there already, but I will go through and do what I need to do. And if I can't, I'll call you.
Okay, perfect. Call us if you need support with that. So let's all do that in the next week. Um, okay. Then let's move on to item four and, um. Let's spend. You know, five to 10 minutes on this one as, but maybe not more, um, discussion on the window building permit question. This was a question about. Whether or not. When, when retrofitting an existing window in a building requires a building permit relating to the building. Um, envelope, things like that. Gary, do you want to start maybe with your? Like why, why you brought this to us and then we can have a discussion?
Early, uh, fr- from what I could gather from, uh, uh, email Kristen sent out. Was that about the, uh, uh, building, the window envelope or, or that? And a building over a century old does not have. The envelope. There, they didn't have the, the, uh, building materials that we have today. Uh, and nothing would, uh, breach that in the sandstone rock of that building. And that, uh, where they're just pulling out a window and it's not even the original window. The windows have been replaced over the years. They're just pulling out a window and putting in a new window. And then sealing it up. Nothing is affecting that. That envelope. Uh, that, I mean, that they used up here on my barn when they put my windows in. You know, all the ceiling around it on the, on the outside of the building. And so I was kind of confused as to. Why they would need a building permit just to replace windows. And then it went along with the, uh, the ordinance where the word repair was in there. And that you needed a building permit if you were doing a repair on your home. And so it was just kind of up for, I, I was a little confused, so threw it out there, but. This is probably the best forum to bring it to instead of. Through the email forum.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, because. We try not to, like for the public, we try not to deliberate things over email because of. We don't want to violate the open and public meetings act. So this is a perfect chance to talk about that. Thanks, Gary. And I'll, I'll just say that the question of the definition of repair, we did send that. That to town council, um, to, well, to the mayor is something that we wanted to flag for the. For them to address in the building code, but. Yeah, do people have, um. Thoughts or questions? I think the other, the other thing related to Gary's question here is, is our question of what do we do when, um. When someone disagrees with the building department. We also sent that to the town council, but haven't heard back yet. Probably because they haven't heard back from the town lawyer, but. Curious if people want to respond to Gary or have other thoughts or questions.
I think it goes to procedure and procedure is the building department tells the applicant what they need or don't need. And the applicant gets to say, I don't like that decision. Can we bring this to? Appeal. And I don't know. I, I want to just casually say that the appeal would just be. Come to planning and zoning and we discuss and whatever, but that doesn't make sense because. Then you're overriding the building department. The appeal process through planning and zoning is an actual process. That has the, you have to set an appeals board and you have to do due process to this. So where that comes in, I'm not sure. And Erin is raising her hand and may have a comment to that. But that's where I, I, because I agree with Gary. If you can show information that says, wait a minute. What is the process to fix that? Go ahead, Erin.
Sorry, I, I feel bad, you know, you guys have heard during your meetings, but I think, you know. At the end of the day, we are paying a qualified building official who has that certification. Who has that title, who has all of the paperwork and certifications to back it up, who understands Utah state code. Now, Kristen, as the building permit technician, works very closely with that individual. And so. While Kristen is going to do a lot of the interfacing with the public, it is Corey Coleman, who again. We are contracted with, he has all of the certifications. He is the one who needs to tell the applicant what is or is not required. Uh, I will look into if there is an appeals process. My guess is it probably would actually just go up to the state. Right? Like, we're talking state code, we're talking state building codes. These are not arguable things as to, I mean, it, it's. In my mind, it's going to be very black and white. And so that's why we've hired someone who understands those codes. And so while I appreciate that planning and zoning has sat in that role for quite some time. That's why we're building out this administrative arm to handle these items. So, um. I will, I will continue to work with Kristen and Corey to ensure that like they are getting all of these into their inbox. Um, but in the grand scheme of things, that is what Corey has been hired to do is to determine when or when a, when not a building permit is required.
I like it. Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin. Do you mind following up with us though and letting us know like what, what you find out about the appeal process or?
Yeah, absolutely.
However, we should note that all of this is moot at the moment. Because this was a general question of, do you think we need it? And they haven't applied at all. So when they go to apply to the building apartment, department, we probably won't even see it. And so Erin is right because the argument would be between applicant. And building department, which would go to state code. So that was an excellent answer.
Yep. And thank you, Gary, for raising it and bringing it, brought up so many other really important points too, so. Okay, are we good if, if I, if we move on? So item five, idling ordinance. I don't have any updates on that. Erin, do you have any updates?
Yeah, sorry. It was tabled by town council. Um, the mayor had not yet gotten to it, but I think they're going to pull it back to like a whole council discussion.
Okay. Okay, we'll probably remove that from our work sessions until we have like a draft to work on, so. Okay, then item six, um, discuss the goal of the renewable and or solar energy ordinance. This was the question of, um, we have been tasked with the exciting task of writing. An ordinance for the town, um, as to where in terms of land use, solar and or renewable energy. Um, developments can be cited. I think the question at hand is, do we limit that? Like, what is the goal of this ordinance essentially? Um, and do we limit it to solar or do we expand it to generally renewables or just like? Wind and thermal, um. I will preface this, as I mentioned before, like there were a lot of draft. Templates out there for solar that I grabbed and started working one for us. Uh, so a solar one could be a lot more straightforward because those templates exist. A couple of things we can consider, like. Wind potential, Bluff has relatively low wind potential, so it may not be a place for siding. I think we have low thermal potential. So I think the question really is. If we wanted to do a broader renewable energy ordinance, what energy types will we want to be looking at? And? Do we want to make it that expansive or just keep it to solar? Or maybe there's some other solution here, but. Open it up to the commission.
We do have a house, we do have, I'm sorry, we do have a house in town that is, um, geothermally heated. So I mean, I think that the idea is that we be careful. I mean, maybe it's a solar. Uh, ordinance with a, an addendum called, uh, we're open to other suggestions. You know, and I don't know how you sort of generally approve the idea that some other things might happen. Because as we mentioned, wind is, wind is not around here, not today, but. Wind is not available for energy probably. So I, I just, I just, um, sort of. The word planning always comes back to haunt me. Let's plan for what could happen and get it. So I'd like it to be a little bigger than just solar.
Thanks, Marsha.
I'd agree with that too. I mean, as we know today too, the wind is. The wind is whipping and it seems like wind is another viable, another viable source of renewable energy here. So I like that they're broadening it up.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'm not going to lie, I haven't done a lot of research on this and so I don't have too much of an opinion. And I know at last meeting. You and I, Amanda, talked about getting together and starting to work on something and. I was just, I just remembered that. So still available. I think we should still do that and I will. Do a little bit of search before we meet.
Okay. How about, um. Yeah, so Malia, maybe if you wouldn't mind doing a little research on like broader renewable energy ordinances and then I have the solar one already in a Google Doc. Maybe you and I can meet this week and begin, um, putting them together.
Sounds great. I like the idea of at least bringing something to the commission and then we can start saying, yeah, no.
Yeah. Okay, great. We'll meet. And I'm, I'm around most of this week, so that'd be fun. Cool. Okay, any other concerns about, uh, the solar renewable ordinance? Alrighty, um. Then I think. Next is items for next agenda. So we'll have, we'll have a standing building department update as we had last time. I think we have an LUC. What else can, would folks like to see on that neck, uh, regular meeting agenda?
Um, I would like to add the letter from Kate about design build bluff that I forwarded to you guys today. Um, I think it brought up some interesting questions and they're, you know, legitimate questions that would be up for discussion. And so it would be a discussion item in order to direct the, um, design build bluff. New development, uh, as to what they can and cannot do. And I, I think those were, it was, it was a nice letter of legitimately trying to understand what's available to them. So I'd like that on the agenda, um. But I just wondered, could you tell me that LUC that you're think, did I? Are we doing?
I might be wrong with that. I'm, I might be conflating the fact that. The McDermott LUC salutes be sent, so apologies.
No, well, I hope, I talked to Erin this morning because I got another email saying, where's my stuff? So. I'm going to go with the idea that Erin was able to finish a lot of that today and I'll let her answer that.
Yeah, it's been, it's been emailed and sent, payment has been received and they're already in contact with the building department.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, I know Parker had sent me the email. I was out of, on vacation and so I really hoped that he had followed up with you.
Well, I've, I've been following up and then it, it fell off the radar for a minute. And by the time he answered, I felt bad, like we missed something. So Erin and I talked this morning, we got it done. And as long as Parker has his information, we're done.
Awesome. Okay, um.
Luann has it.
Well, Luann, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, and just a, a quick question, just, uh, maybe this is obvious to you all, but on the solar ordinance. Or renewable energy ordinance. Does the zoning come after there's an ordinance or do you zone areas that can be? Solar ready for say a solar field or wind field or whatever? And then write the ordinance as to how you can do it there? Or do we? Do the ordinance and then say, well, if you do all these things, this is where you can do it.
Uh, usually coincides.
Yeah, it'll be like the, um, the over, the. It, the, what would we call that? Not the helicopter ordinance, but the air.
Overlay, an overlay ordinance?
Yes, where we, we say. Here's what the renewable energy can look like. Here's the types of zones we can, it can be in. And then we have a map created in association with it.
Okay, because I could see that the zoning would change for, you know, if you're looking at big solar fields and whatnot is to say. You know, that those aren't probably places that are allowable in the agricultural zones or the. You know, residential, whatever, but, um, are they allowed in the commercial? Are they allowed only out in ag land or, or what? Anyway, just wondering if it happens all at the same time, it sounds like.
And that's, those are exactly those types of questions we'll be tackling and recommending, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I was just going to say, Luann, we don't know, we're about to learn.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for working on it.
Um, something else for the agenda, the Hanson Group. Airport overlay ordinance and then also. The free general plan review that they've offered if we want to vote on that. Did we vote on that last week?
We did vote on that.
Oh, okay.
I told, I told the council how we wanted to proceed with that. Yeah, Luann? Or is this related?
No, I was thinking, yeah, sorry. I was thinking that, yeah, I kind of have an update ready, but that, Malia hit the other one and that was. A confusing point in what. I think what you guys all voted on last time, this planning and zoning. Part of you guys doing the general plan and then decided that Hanson ought to do the overlay for the airport. Anne said that they offered to do a free, uh, review of the general plan. And we want that.
That's, we, we voted yes to the free review, yes to the airport overlay. And then depending on their review of the general plan, we would decide whether or not. The town could, the town and planning is only to take on the general plan work or if we would hire them for that work.
Okay. All right, very good.
I'd email that to the mayor, but maybe I can reemail that if that would be helpful.
Uh, if you did, then that's fine. It just was, there was confusion that the last one and I, maybe I misunderstood you at the last meeting, but. That's fine. Uh, the other thing is the dark skies, uh, submission was put in again. So that should all be. For the, the designation. So that just went in again Tuesday for the kind of the final submission and they did have to change something. They amended one of it to, to change the size of the sign, uh, but, but that we can talk about later too, it's.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, we have a good list of agenda items. Malia, were you finished with your list? Okay, great. Uh, but we'll obviously see what comes up, of course. Um, okay, any items under eight other? Nope, okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Meeting is adjourned at seven eleven PM. Um, wonderful being together with you virtually tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes, have a good night.